Please ask for the plans of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page. Councilmember Wassinger. Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Vice Chair, we have a forum.
Is there a motion for the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of May 8, 2018?
Set.
My motion for the approval of the Journal.
Set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Journal is approved. We have no bid open this evening, so we'll move to communications. Madam Vice Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, first district. Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Item number two, second district. Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Item number three, third district.
Receive and file.
So ordered. Item number four, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number five, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the council exercises its power of review, and the matter be referred back to the planning commission for further review, please.
So ordered. Moving on to road and bridge matters, Madam Vice Chair. Item number one, all districts. Receive and file, and that will be the order. And moving on to other communications, Madam Vice Chair. Item number one, all districts. Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number two, fourth and fifth districts.
Same motion.
So ordered. Item number three, second district. Same motion, and that will be the order. Item number four, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the deposit agreements and subdivision plan be approved as recommended, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Item number five, first district. Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number six, third district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons. Item number one, all districts. Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Please include a distribution chart, and that will be the order. Item number two, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number three, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number four, please.
So ordered. Report from the county executive. There are no reports of special committees. We'll move to the public forum. We have eight speakers. Eight speakers? Madam Vice Chair. Please come forward when your name is called. You have three minutes, and we will alert you on your time. First speaker this evening is Joseph Hoffman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Hoffman. I live at 6601 Higgy Road in Afton. And I'm here to speak tonight about the proposed rezoning of the property of Tower T from commercial sporting facility to residential and putting 158 new homes on that property.
Madam Vice Chair, could we ask the speaker to pull the microphone a little bit closer?
Afton is already a very densely populated area. St. Louis County as a whole has 1,966 people per square mile. Crestwood next to Afton has 1,514 people per square mile. Kirkwood has 3,006. Webster Groves has 1,650. Afton has 4,480 residents per square mile. And it's getting even more dense, you know, as we speak right now, right close to Tower T. On McKenzie Road, McBride's got another development that they're currently building, 38 more homes. And adding another 158 homes to that little area is just too much. Adding even more residents per square mile affects the quality of life in a negative way. It's too crowded. Traffic gets bad. The utilities are strained, just to mention a few things. Now, Afton has a great shortage of green space and parks. There isn't much of that in Afton. Tower T, that property, provided much of that use for Afton. It was an outdoor recreational place, a park-like place for the people in the area. And of course, it's closing down, but the solution isn't to cram 158 more houses onto that piece of property. It doesn't mean it couldn't still be used for outdoor recreation. It couldn't be used for park area. We need that. We need green space and outdoor recreation more than we need more homes in Afton. Last month, Fenton City Council voted on a proposal by McBride to rezone some parcel of land in its town from 20,000 square foot to 10,000 square foot lot sizes, and Fenton turned them down. That's because Fenton has its own city council made up of people who live in Fenton and care about Fenton and are concerned with Fenton and look out for the interest of the people of Fenton. Unfortunately, Afton is not incorporated. We don't have our own city council to look out for us, and we have you. Now, hopefully, you can look on Afton as part of your community, as a group of people that you're concerned about, and not permit this to go through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Toni Pellic.
Good evening, everybody. I left my regular script at home, so I've just wrote something quickly. I want to thank everybody for you guys being our voice of our communities. I've learned a lot by coming to the meetings. In fact, I enjoy hearing about the whole community, not just ours. Okay. Let me begin from the disturbing news that was given to us last week. It was upsetting as it was to all of us, saving Mr. Lotz gave us this disheartening news. As upsetting as it was to all of us working hard to save this tract of beautiful property for our community, I have to commend Michael Burton for so gallantly taking his place at this stadium, at this podium, and express with his emotions on how he felt about this news. And I want to commend him. Thank you, Michael. It is with great... It is time to move forward now. I went to planning and zoning this past week and retrieved all the addresses surrounding the property. It will be 1,000 feet in each direction to be rezoned. This is beautiful property and can be created to make family and stories for a lifetime, not just the 50 years that Mr. Lotz had it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Stephanie Guth.
Please excuse my shaky voice. This is terrifying. I am an Afton resident, married, mother of two. You all may remember my two children that spoke here two weeks ago about Tower T. I wanted to address Mr. Stanger directly, so if you all could pass on the message. I noticed that he stepped out just before my children took the stage. I'm sorry that he missed it. It would have been great to see support from our county executive to our younger generation. I also wanted to thank all of you for your public service. I can't imagine the challenges that you face, all in the name to support our community. And Ms. Erby, I wanted to speak directly to you. I've heard you described as, quote, "a good person with a heart for the citizens and a belief that the citizens come first." There's nothing I can say about Tower T that you don't already know. Clearly, green space is better for our community. I am raising a family in this community. You saw my children. They attend the public school that McBride wants to overcrowd. I will admit, I was disheartened to see your recent campaign donations, but I suspect that McBride donates to everyone's campaign except for Trachis. If anyone wants to correct me on that, I'd love to be wrong. Ms. Erby, I hear you have a backbone. I know that we are not your district, nor are we near your district, but we are a part of your St. Louis community, and we need you to stand up for us. Mr. Dolan, Tower T is closing. I get that. July 7th is coming, and so is the proposal. But to answer some of the rebuttals that you've had to my neighbors, yes, I would rather see an industrial park there. I understand that the county does not own the land, but you do control the zoning, and you are supposed to represent us, not your donors. I would say I myself am probably one of the biggest threats to democracy because I'm an apathetic citizen. I don't typically get involved. I don't get involved in government or civic action, but I'm here week after week. I'm getting babysitters. I'm missing baseball practices and dance lessons, all to support my community. So just imagine the number of supporters that don't want to drive to Clayton after work every week. We are gaining traction and gaining support because this is not a controversial issue to us. The citizens agree. There is no division. Mr. Dolan, your office told me personally that there is a 50-50 split in the community. I would hope that you are not that out of touch with your district. When I brought my children here two weeks ago, I wanted them to learn about government and take part. I want them to believe that their voices matter, even if I am already jaded. I would ask that the council, the entire county council, do the right thing at the time for the St. Louis community when it comes time to cast your vote. I know that the standard procedure is to vote along with whatever that district councilman wants, but I do believe that's a coward's way out, and that is not why we elected you. We are a St. Louis community, so please vote in favor of it. We need you to stand up for us, not sell us out. And Mr. Dolan, please consider me when you cast your vote, and I will consider you when I cast mine.
Next speaker is Amelia R. Opelt.
Can I make just one brief comment? Just I want to put this to rest with the 50-50 thing. I know you called our office, and my assistant talked to you, as we do to everybody who calls our office. We're not shying away from anybody. We talk to everybody. Throughout, and I wasn't in the conversation, but what I gathered from it was, we get calls on issues all the time. So there's pros, people far, people against. He wasn't judging so much this issue just in general. We get a lot of calls, you know, it's just, it's, you know, we get it on both sides. That's basically what he was saying. He wasn't saying there's 300 here or 100 there. He wasn't counting the calls. And obviously, we know that the calls we get are typically people who are against something, and I understand it. Obviously, we know what your concerns, and I understand it. And when the process goes through the process, we'll deal with it at the time. So I am aware of that. I do know that. So when we get calls, it's just a general, we weren't counting exactly to say that you don't have any support. I acknowledge your support. I appreciate your support. I'm not saying you don't have it. So just for the record, I understand that you have more support than a lot of people who are complacent or are for something typically don't call. So that's, in general, how it goes. That's basically what his answer was. So you do have more support than people against it, than people far. I acknowledge that. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, if I may. Mr. Dug, I want to commend you on coming here tonight and encourage you to continue to do so. You are keeping the republic exactly the way Ben Franklin cautioned Elizabeth Powell to do so. So make no mistake, your presence here tonight, your children's presence here in the past, and the rest of you folks, you're doing exactly what you have to do to keep the republic, and I commend you all for it. Don't give up.
Hello, I'm Amelia Opelt. I live at 7834 Colleen. I have my family's been in Afton more than 100 years. My father was born on Hanover in a house my grandfather built. The houses I live in, my uncle built, the houses that all look the same on Colleen. And I love Afton. I worry that the green space, the quality of life. Recently, there was an air quality study, and our air is not that good. And I know they're going to bulldoze all the trees that are right there in the area, that there's... The runoff from that area, I understand there hasn't been studies done on the traffic. The runoff, just as an example, 141 and 44, when you denude the area and you pour a lot of concrete, you don't need an engineering degree to know that it's going to wind up in my basement. When we went to the meetings on the houses on Graboy, there were people that had had severe problems located to the rear of that subdivision. I'd love to hear from them now how things are. If they add 150 homes and they hook it up... My house was the first house my uncle built. It's 64 years old, so he sold off the two lots that face Higgy to put it in the streets and the sewer. And so my sewer's 64 years old. And I can't see how adding on brand-new sewers and tying them into my sewers is going to be to my advantage. I'm reading Harry Truman, right now, the book, and on Truman's desk, he had a frame with a model from Mark Twain. It says, "Always do right. This will gratify some people and astonish the rest." I really wish to know how you think this is right for Afton, how you think that this overcrowding... We were on Higgy the other night. The train came, and the arms went down. We were heading towards Watson. They were backed up all the way across Watson already when the train was there. I had people at that underpass, which is going to fall on my head, that they were coming on the wrong side of the street because it was clogged up already, you know, that I can't imagine adding that the houses across from the high school are going to add to our traffic. There's an older affordable living area they're building by St. George, part of the Jewish cemetery, you know, and I just, I love Afton. I really hope that other people can see we deserve better than this. We deserve better than to have...
That's three minutes, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Barbara Pollak.
Hi, my name is Barbara Pollak, and I live at 6508 Colleen, also in the vicinity of Tower T. I'd like to start off by a little bit of history. Back in the mid-'90s, there was a plan to extend 170 all the way down, and we would have lost several businesses right along the railroad tracks. We would have lost Marlboro Trail Apartments. We would have lost several buildings in the Highland House Apartments. And there were two or three subdivisions, one of them only about 10 years old at the time, that would have gone under. And strangely enough, no one seemed concerned with having enough housing at that time. I came across this little article in Popular Science this month, and I thought it's done up as a cartoon, but I thought it really made a point. This family is enticed into buying into this new subdivision being built so they can be close to nature. So they go out there, and they're trying to be close to nature. Of course, when McBride builds homes, they bulldoze every living thing in sight. Every tree, every bush, every blade of grass is gone. I've seen it. And they're going to build 158 homes in this 27-acre tract of land. A typical new subdivision in these places is 22 homes, no, sorry, 48 homes in 22 acres. So we're way over that. And then when these people move in there, they're going to find out that their gardens are getting eaten. And to them, I say, duh, you build a home in a place that's already occupied by a herd of deer, your flowers are going to get eaten. There's going to be so much pavement. The deer are going to get killed. Cars are going to get disabled, and, you know, people can also be hurt. And then comes the rain. We have 158 roofs, 158 driveways, and not to mention all the pavement that's going to go into this. Yes, there are going to be retention ponds. I don't think it's going to be nearly enough. I hope that you listen to the community. We don't want this. We don't need it. We desperately want to save our green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Burton.
Hey, y'all. Michael Burton here. Good to see y'all again. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chairman, or Mrs. Vice Chairman, I'm not sure, but thank you for being here. You know, yeah, last week was a little tough for us, you know, right? I have been out of town for four days and really haven't spent a lot of time trying to get people here to this meeting today, and I'm quite impressed of the people that have just showed up. I was quite pleasantly surprised, so you can tell that we're not going anywhere. I still want to make something very clear, and not everybody agrees with me, and that's okay. Make no mistake, we are still trying to save Tower T. And if not Tower T as it is, something very close to it through our nonprofit, okay? But make no mistake, that is still our 100% goal. I'm sure you could tell. I was stunned last week, but those were not Steve Lotz's words, as far as I'm concerned. They might have been coming out of his mouth, but those were not Steve Lotz's words, comparing Tower T to Topgolf in Chesterfield, I mean. So I feel like McBride, Tegna, somebody got to him, and he was basically forced to walk the plank because, and I think you all believe that as well. I drove to the East Coast and back this past week, and I had a lot of time to think about our plans and what we're really doing here. And I think it really comes back to the most important thing to keep in mind is, this is a clear example of a giant corporation buying out a small business, a small, family-friendly business. I said it last week. And we all, including you, Councilman Dolan, have stories that we were disappointed when we had these childhood places, your own golf course that Target took over. We all have those stories where it's like, dang it, this was part of our community, and big business came in and they wiped it out because supposedly, big business always wins. But big business does not always win. And I'm hoping to prove that once again with the situation because it is the right thing to do. Thank you all very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Do I have 16 seconds? Real quick. Sorry, I can't waste time. This is our next step. This right here, I can pass it down if you'd like to take a look at it. If we get 75%...
Burton, next time you have something you want to hand to the council members, you should give it to me.
Okay, I will. If I could just have 10 seconds. Sorry about that. If we get...
That is three minutes, Madam Vice Chair.
I'm sorry, Ms. Vice Chairman. If we get 75% of the people, actually 25%, but I'm sure we can get 75% of the people, property owners that surround Tower T within a thousand-foot radius, you all will then need a supermajority to stop, to change the rezoning from commercial to residential, okay? And so that's what we are focused on. We're hoping to get all of those signatures, which we know we can do, and we're hoping that one, two, three, or all seven of you will look at that and stop the rezoning. Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me go over my time.
Next speaker is Erin Gonzalez.
Hello. My name is Erin Gonzalez, and I'm at 4046 Domenico Court in Bridgeton. As you can tell, I'm also an employee of Justice Services here at St. Louis County. I'm going into my 12th year. I want to explain something to you about me. Obviously, you know where I work, but I'm also fluent in Spanish and translate whenever I'm asked at the jail. I do not get extra pay for that, and I could easily refuse to do so because it's not part of my job description. But I enjoy helping out when I can in any area. I recently had, well, not, I shouldn't say recently, but I had a gentleman who was injured on the rec yard. He hurt himself, hit his head, and I was called up to assist, to translate with the nurses because he did not understand English at all. The gentleman was fine when I got there, laying there. The nurses were standing over to the side, talking, waiting for the paramedics to come. And during that time, the gentleman started to become non-responsive. I kept trying to talk to him, shake him. He ended up that he was no longer responsive, and I had to get the nurse, and they started CPR. Fortunately, they were able to get the gentleman back, and because I was there, I was able to talk to him and explain to him what was going on and what was going to happen. He kept asking me if it was his time to go to God, and I said, "Not on my watch. No, not right now, please." And I'm glad to say that he actually came back that night and was able to return to the jail with no problems. But it's just an example of the staff and the employees that work at Justice Services and what we're called to do at any time. You never know. I take a lot of pride in my job, and I am very frustrated right now. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to get emotional. But as you know, I've already spoken on the fact that I'm barely above the poverty level at a 12-year job. And I am so frustrated that Mr. Stanger is not here again tonight to hear what we have to say in person. It frustrates me, and I appreciate that all of you are here and that you're listening. But for those of us who've come to the meetings, and you can tell there's not many people here tonight because they're frustrated. We received a letter from Mr. Stanger. We understand the position of the FOP. We totally agree. We're not, we're not trying to discount that. We're not trying to disagree. We understand. But when is this going to be resolved? It's been six months, six months of us coming here on something that we should have had from the very beginning. It should have never been a question that we were not given the same accountability and the same credit and respect as the rest of our coworkers. All I'm asking for is a resolution. Unfortunately, I cannot stay for the rest of the meeting because I have to return to my post, but I do thank you all. I do appreciate your work and your efforts, and I hope that this can become a resolution here either tonight or sometime very soon.
That's three minutes, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you so much.
Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Gonzalez, if I may, very quickly, I just want to make sure I understood your testimony tonight. In the incident you described, you were there.
Yes, sir.
You were translating for the injured inmate, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also present were nurses.
Yes, sir.
Is that right? And they attended to this young man?
Yes.
And if I understood correctly, they administered CPR and very likely saved his life?
They did, yes, sir.
No doubt in your mind about that?
No doubt in my mind.
Nurses, on-site, at the correction center, right?
Yes, sir.
Any doubt in your mind, ma'am, whether or not these nurses assisted in the exercise of public safety?
No, obviously, that's what they do every day. That's what we all do every day.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Final speaker this evening is Azora Ligan. Ms. Ligan?
Oh, she was out there. Introduction of bills.
Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, and ordinance providing for a boundary adjustment between the city of Floriston and St. Louis County and authorizing certain actions to be taken with regard to such adjustments. Bill number 103, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Berry Road, lying wholly within unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore, and authorizing execution of contracts, agreements, and related documents, AR-1679. Bill number 104, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing... An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Oats Associates Incorporated with professional engineering services related to the McElvee Road resurfacing Phase One project, AR-1497. Madam Vice Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number 44, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Bill number 91, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business, that will be the order.
Bill number 95, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number 95.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 95 is perfected.
Bill number 96, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move to perfect bill number 96, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 96 is perfected.
Bill number 97, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect bill number 97, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 97 is perfected.
Bill number 98, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number 98.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 98 is perfected.
Bill number 99, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold bill number 99 on the order of business, please, pending a hearing of the committee of the whole.
So ordered.
Bill number 100, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Please hold bill number 100, and bill number 100 is held.
Bill number 101, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect bill number 101, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 101 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 305, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Move to hold bill 305.
Bill number 305 is held.
Bill number 353, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold bill number 353, bill number 353 is held.
Bill number 85, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 85.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 85, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number 85 is finally passed.
Bill number 86, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill 86. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 86, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number 86 is finally passed.
Bill number 87, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of bill number 87. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 87, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number 87 is finally passed.
Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 88.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 88, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number 88 is finally passed.
Bill number 89, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of bill number 89, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 89, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number 89 is finally passed.
Bill number 90, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of bill number 90.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 90, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number 90 is finally passed.
Bill number 92, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of bill number 92. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 92, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number 92 is finally passed.
Bill number 93, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 93.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 93, there are four ayes, one no, and two absent.
Bill number 93 is finally passed.
Bill number 94, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 94.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 94, there are four ayes, one no, and two absent.
Bill number 94 is finally passed.
We have no resolutions this evening, Madam Chair, so we'll move to, Madam Vice Chair, so we'll move to unfinished business. Item number one.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three, all districts.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four, third district.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number five, fourth district.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
And we have nothing under new business this evening, Madam Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, are there any comments, anything?
Motion, motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, bill number 94.